Okay, go ahead Kathy.
Okay, the meeting is called to order. James, will you take the role please?
Kathy Conroy.
Here.
Gary Pavlik.
Here.
John Normile.
Here.
Katie McLaren. Katie, you with us?
He is, but, there you go.
Okay, and Jack McCann.
Here.
Katie, that was you saying you're here, right?
Yes.
Okay, and I don't think we have Jack on the call.
Okay, so we can go ahead with board members.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, so let's go now with case number 55, The Castle at 49 Second Street. They're administrative appeal of a use variance applicant seeks to appeal a decision made by the Director of Code Enforcement on use classification in a B4 zone. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Yes.
Who said yes?
Laura Ryder.
Okay.
And Peter Jones, attorney.
Where is Laura, am I missing Laura Ryder?
I'm right here.
Oh, I'm sorry, there you are, right in the middle, I apologize. Okay, I see ya. Okay, so whoever wants to go first, please do.
I'll do it, Peter.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this is Laura Ryder speaking. Just a little background, when we put in our application, it was determined by Dave Sheeran that the uses that the owner and tenant want to use this building for are deemed a rooming house, which is not an allowed use in the B4 zone. And it also doesn't really encompass all the things that the tenant wants to do. So James, James Frost suggested I write up a appeal for perhaps a different determination of use that is more encompassing of what the group wants to do. So I don't know if everybody had a chance to read the narrative that I wrote, but in a nutshell, the Castle, just a little bit of the whole, the background. You know, the Castle has been a fraternity since 1932. The building that they're in, if none of you have had the pleasure of walking through it, it is still a one-family residence with one kitchen and 15 bedrooms. And it's, you know, it's historically intact, you know, it's, they've done a great job of keeping it up. So the fraternity has been disbanded and the building ownership has turned over to a corporation that's made up of all the alumni. They're not ready to part with the building yet, so they decided they would lease it for a few years till they figure out what to do. They wanted to lease it to a commercial tenant, they don't want to be a landlord, they don't want it, they don't want to divide it up into apartments, they want it to be, you know, kept the way it is with, you know, as a one-family residence without, you know, without ruining the historic features of the building. So they've been working with Jim Conway for about six months, is that right Jim? And they've been, you know, seeking a tenant that would be able to use the building in its current state without really altering it. And so after numerous, you know, false starts, they've found this arts group. They're calling themselves Castle Arts and it's a bunch of primarily actors coming up from New York City who want to do immersive theater in this wonderful space, as well as arts programs and, you know, a myriad of other things, some of which would include, you know, food and beverage. And, you know, they would charge money for these small-scale performances. And they would live upstairs. So the lease would be with the arts organization, not with individuals. The fraternity alumni are not interested, as I said, in being landlords. They really want to, you know, just keep this as a business lease. So the use class rooming house doesn't really seem like the best fit because it doesn't really allow for all this other, you know, stuff that they would like to do in the building. And it did include some pictures in the narrative of some of the grander spaces on the first floor. And, you know, the rooms are large for a residence. But the building is, you know, the building is really unique because the first floor is all common spaces and they're all, you know, they're big when you think about it as a residential scale, but they're, you know, they're not huge for a commercial scale. So the, the general, you know, package that this arts group wants to do, it includes everything. Like the building really can't support itself if you've only used the first floor spaces. And so the sort of combination of arts group with the residential upstairs makes the whole thing fly. So we're not really feeling like it's a rooming house, you know, we're feeling like it's a, like there is no definition in our zoning ordinance that defines what this is, you know, so we're kind of looking at all the definitions and saying, well, what really, what definition best fits these uses? You know, and the intent of the B4 zone is to provide, you know, mixed uses of commercial, entertainment, you know, eateries, as well as, you know, residential above the first floor. So I think it meets the intent, all those uses meet the intent. None of them are at odds with the B4 zone. And we felt like maybe hotel is really the best, the best label or the best use as defined by our zoning ordinance, because a hotel does incorporate, you know, event space, possible performances, eating and drinking, you know, maybe a gallery or a talk, you know, that's arts-related, as well as lodging, you know. And the main arts group will have a number of permanent residents for the, I don't know if they're having a one- or three-year lease. I mean, the Castle Corporation is looking to lease, I think, for a longer term than, I think, three years, is that what they're looking for, Jim? So we would have some, you know, long-term residents and then they would also be reducing number of bedrooms from 15 to 10 because some of those spaces need to be used for office space and other things. And so the remaining bedrooms, they might rent out for, you know, visiting artists who might be part of a performance or maybe, you know, just friends who are, you know, looking for a place to stay for a while, these are artists, they're kind of transient sometimes. You know, maybe Airbnb-ing it if they need to keep the income stream, you know, going between performances. So the feel of the place, you know, it feels more like a hotel, you know, and that isn't allowed use in the B4 zone. So we're sort of looking for, you know, for the board to say, to make that determination, what use is it? What would you agree to?
So what happened was, you went to the city and Dave Sheeran deemed it to be a rooming house.
Correct.
And that's what you're questioning.
Yes.
Now, in my mind, a rooming house is a place where you might get a room and I might get a room and somebody else is going to get a room, none of whom are connected to each other. That's my opinion of what a rooming house would be.
Right.
As opposed to this type of a use, which is all interconnected with each other. Everybody seems to have the common interest of this arts-type feel and that would be the reason why they were there, as opposed to, I need a room for three months for whatever reason and that would be a rooming house. I don't know how everybody else on the zoning board feels about it, but that would basically be my thought about the difference between a rooming house and this type of venture. Does anybody else from the zoning board have anything they want to ask before we go on to who else might have something to say? From the, Gary? Go ahead Gary.
There we go. I agree with you Kathy, it seems like, more like a hostel, hotel, something other than a rooming house. I agree with you, that definition, I don't think fits this need either. And maybe the folks can explain more, but it makes sense to me.
Well, I think Laura did a great job of explaining it, I don't know if we need anything else unless Peter or Jim or anybody else for that matter, but Peter, you said you were associated with this, do you have anything you want to add?
Yes, I think that one of the key things is we're talking about a single tenant. Whereas in a rooming house, it's multiple, as you were saying, so that's the key here.
And Jim, did you have anything you want, or you're just here to answer questions?
I think it's an outstanding use of the building, of the property. And I liken it quite a bit to Yado. It's like an artist-in-residence facility that also has the component of a performance space. So it's as if Yado were to open its doors and invite people in to see a performance.
Yes, I think that's well put. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say in favor of this application? This is secretary voice, I feel like I'm in the middle of a... James?
This is Aaron with the city. I'd just like to ask either Laura or Peter or maybe even Jim if they could, perhaps using the city's definition as written in our ordinance, if they could explain perhaps in just a few sentences, what part of that definition does not apply to their, to their use, just for the record, just so that, you know, I echo everyone's opinion that this is a fantastic use for the property and that, you know, I think this is a good benefit for the city. I just want to make sure that the record is very clear in what it is you're saying.
You're talking about not, why it's not a rooming house, what the definition of a rooming house is, that this is not, is that what you said?
Exactly. For instance, I look at the phrase joint occupancy or single management, is there any phrase that's in our definition that does not apply?
Of a rooming house, your definition of a rooming house.
Well, my understanding, just one point would be that my understanding of a rooming house is that they are short-term lodgers and that is not the intention here, these people are going to live here long-term. So that would be one key point.
Okay. Laura, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, I have the definitions right at hand, so I can sort of just tell you what our zoning ordinance does say. A rooming house is considered a dwelling unit where group sleeping accommodations are provided in one room or a series of closely associated rooms under joint occupancy and single management in which there are provided common facilities for eating and living and in which there are provided such services that are incidental to its use as a residence. It does not allow anywhere in there for any sort of commercial invite public in to see a performance or a meal, have a meal, a public meal, you know, maybe just meals provided to the lodgers. Whereas a hotel, again, it's not the best definition for what the arts group wants to do there, but I think it's the best fit based on what limited definitions we have in our ordinance. A hotel is defined as a building consisting of at least six rooms used primarily for the provision of sleeping accommodations for the transient public and which may provide additional services such as restaurants, meeting rooms, and recreational facilities. So it's all-encompassing, it includes sleeping arrangements as well as restaurants, meeting rooms, and entertainment, which is really, that's the heart of what this arts group wants to do. You know, they're not a hospitality group, they are a performance group, an arts group. So I feel like, you know, although we have to bend it a little bit because it's more like a residential hotel, we have people who are here for the long-term, as well as maybe a few rooms set aside for, you know, visiting artists who are transient. But I feel like of the limited choices in our ordinance, that one, that definition encompasses all the things that the arts group is trying to do. You know, if they want to have an event with meals served, check, we got a restaurant. You know, if they want a performance, check, we got entertainment. You know, if they want to do a lecture or just have, you know, a gallery show, you know, we got meeting rooms or, you know. I feel like it's the only, it's the only definition in our ordinance that covers all of the things the arts group wants to do.
Thank you.
But to be clear, the use isn't open to the public, is that correct?
Correct, right, it's not like, it's not, right, it's not a public hotel where you can just call up and say, hey, I need a room. You know, it's really just, you know, words of mouth, who they know and, you know, and to be, you know, fair, they, like I said, they may have to, maybe they Airbnb a few rooms if they need the cash flow, that's it though. Mostly it's them, it's a group of artists, you know.
So then it's almost as though, you know, to classify this as a rooming house, you'd have to classify the fire stations as rooming houses, right? Because of the way the living arrangements are at a fire station, but, you know, obviously there's a different purpose for that.
Right.
For their structure.
Yeah.
Okay, John or Katie, do you have anything you want to ask?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay, John, go ahead.
I guess the first one is for James. James, the definitions that are here in the packet, let's say they're from the zoning ordinance, you can back that up, right? We can rely on these?
I'm sorry, what's your question? I mean, that's copied and pasted from the zoning ordinance, yes, the definition is exactly what it says.
I didn't have a chance to go and check them.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure the board had that definition in front of them when considering this case so that you can understand where, how a rooming house has traditionally been defined versus or compared to this case and what this case's definition might be.
Yeah, that's the second part of this. Our job tonight is to hear the appeal of the application of the definition of rooming house.
So the application, the applicant proposed this, put this proposal forward and Dave Sheeran determined that it was a rooming house, the Director of Code Enforcement, who makes the call on when things have to go in front of the ZBA or planning commission to move forward in the city. So the applicant is basically appealing that decision that this would be considered a rooming house based on what Laura and the rest of the applicant team has presented, stating why they believe it shouldn't be considered a rooming house. If it were, if the board decided that it would be a rooming house, if they agree with the interpretation that Dave has put forward, then it's clear that they would need a use variance for a rooming house in the B4. So the job of the board tonight, and Andy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is to agree or disagree with Dave Sheeran's interpretation because the applicant is appealing that interpretation.
Okay, John, get that, John? Oh, I'm sorry, Andy, go ahead.
Yeah, that's correct, the initial determination the board has to meet is whether or not they agree that this use, this proposed use should be structured as a rooming house. If they disagree with that determination of the building inspector, then the next step for the board would be classify what they do believe that it is and that will drive whether or not they're going to need a use variance. If you do agree with the building inspector, then, it's my understanding applicants have also submitted a use variance to ask for permission to be allowed to be a rooming house in the B4 district. But if you decide that it doesn't meet the definition of a rooming house, that use variance becomes irrelevant, although it, you may, they may need a new one depending upon how you classify it as a use. And in defense of building inspector Sheeran, he's working within the confines of the definitions as they exist and what's being proposed really doesn't meet a specific definition existing within the code. So he was working and using, you know, his best judgment on what he could find in the code. I would also add that one of the things that may have been overlooked is that what's being proposed could constitute a number of uses. It doesn't necessarily have to be a single use. For example, this board could determine that this is both, what's being proposed is both a theater use as well as a residential use, depending upon the facts and whether or not there's compensation for people staying upstairs. I would also add that the definition of theater doesn't specifically prohibit people sleeping over at a theater. There's no specific prohibition of that. But in my sense, I think it's a combination of uses that's being proposed. And again, I'm not saying whether or not it meets the definition of a rooming house, but just from my mind, there's a number of uses being proposed.
Just to add to that, I believe Dave did, does, he did basically say there are a number of uses being proposed, but the only use that wasn't allowed was the rooming house. So he said that, yes, this is a theater, this is an event space and all of those meet, are allowed in the B4 zone except for the rooming house itself.
Right, so if this board determines that rooming house probably isn't the best fit, but what's being proposed is a combination of a theater and a residence, then both of those are allowed in the B4 and they could head on to site plan review if necessary and they wouldn't need to apply for the use variance.
So then, well, first of all, before we lose track of our procedure here, is there anybody here to speak against this proposal? Okay, so can I ask?
Can I add one other point?
Who, oh yeah, Paul, yeah?
Yep, so I'm actually...
Can you introduce yourself please for the record?
Sure, my name is Paul Safran, I'm an alumnus of the local fraternity that is now the owner of the Payne Mansion. I'm a director of Payne Castle Incorporated and actually the applicant to these proceedings. One thing when we went through and worked with Peter and Laura that we did find with the rooming house, the question was asked, what specifically would not really allow it to be defined as a uniting house? And I pulled it up again, in Troy City Code 176-27, Rooming Houses Part C requires bed linens and towels be operated, the operator of every rooming house shall supply bed linen and towels at least once a week and prior to letting of any room or occupant, he shall be responsible for the maintenance of all supplied bedding in clean and sanitary manner. I clearly think that this group is planning on having the individuals responsible for their own laundry. If you wanted to pick a particular part of the city code, it clearly doesn't apply.
I think that's exactly the feedback we, the board's looking for there, yeah, thank you Paul.
Okay, thank you.
Provision of laundry be, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, I was just going to say, does anybody else have anything? John, did you have something you wanted to add or Katie?
I'm just, I'm just thinking procedurally, how do we go about this? So...
That's what I was going to ask.
Sounds as if we're all in general agreement that it is not. So do we make a motion to, do we make a motion to accept the appeal? And then determine the use?
Katie, it seems like you're suffering from some poor connection, is anybody else getting that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think I know the question, the answer Katie is, if you are going to accept the building inspector's determination that's a rooming house, it would be to sustain the building inspector. If you thought that it probably wasn't appropriate to be a rooming house, it would be a motion to overturn the decision of the building inspector. But at that juncture, I think the zoning, it would be incumbent upon the board to add in what they do believe it is.
Okay, so what we want to do is overturn, if we want to vote, if we don't think it's a zoning or a rooming house, then we want to overturn the decision of the Director of Code Enforcement.
Correct.
That's the wording and then say that, instead, I believe that it's a combination theater use and residential use.
That sounds like a motion.
Okay, well, I think I just made a motion, can we go forward or do we have to do a secret or what? James, do we need a secret?
You don't need a secret, it's an interpretation of a regulation, so it's a time-to-action.
All right, well then I'll do it since I just did it. In the case of ZB, oh, I'm sorry, we're not doing that anymore. 55, The Castle at 49 Second Street. I make a motion that we overturn the decision, nothing personal, of the Director of Code Enforcement which referred to the castle as a rooming house. I make a motion that we overturn that decision and instead deem it to be a combination theater use and residential use. Do we have a second on my motion?
Second.
Second by Gary Pavlik. And on the motion, Katie McLaren? Yes, she's nodding her head yes. John Normile?
I'll vote yes.
Gary Pavlik?
Yes.
Jack McCann is not here, correct? Okay, and Kathy Conroy, I vote yes. So, motion passes that we've just overturned the decision of the, and you can go forward with your theater use and residential use in the castle.
Hey, I'm just checking, I'm sorry, I'm just checking the zoning code now. So in B4, I don't see residential explicitly stated, but I think it's like everything that's allowed in the B3 and everything that's allowed.
Right.
Yeah, it's allowed, it is allowed.
Okay, all right.
Well, just to be clear, residential, residential is allowed above the first floor.
Okay.
So I know you guys don't, you said you don't have any bedrooms on the first floors, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so we're all set then, right?
Andy, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, he gave us the wording, right Andy?
Yes, if residential is allowed in the B4, then they no longer need a variance. It's a theater use and a residential use, both are allowed in the B4.
Okay, but one other piece that I also want to make sure is included, whether it's part of theater or not, is that they will have food events there, you know, so we want to be, make sure that we can have, you know, events like, you know, small banquet or, you know, other events where there's...
Is the food being served in connection with the theater use?
I believe it will be at this point, at some point. It might take off where it might become a separate thing that's more open to the public. I think it's hard to know which way it's going to go at this point, you know.
In order to move forward, let's assume it's being done as in conjunction with the theater use and if at a later date you guys need to change the use, we can cross that bridge and we can get there.
I mean, I think we're just going with the what ifs and all we wanted to do basically was get rid of the rooming house definition and go ahead with putting the castle the way it's intended to be and if what if, what if, what if, we'll be here all night long and by the end we might change our minds and vote no.
Okay.
So go, right, quick, get out while the going's good, right?
Okay.
That's a great use now really of the... And then we'll just, you know, like Aaron said, face something in the future if needs be.
Okay, and James?
I'm sure it won't be a problem either, but I just don't see where we can think of every possible issue, use of this tonight.
Right, and so then our use variance will be pulled, we don't need that anymore.
You don't need it anymore, right James?
It's moot.
Right, once, never needed it.
We like that.
Right.
All righty.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'm really happy.
Thank you.
All righty, have a good night everybody.
You too. Next case, 56, Well Now at 222 Ninth Street, an area variance. The applicant seeks an area variance for exceeding the maximum allowable signage in the HCD zone.
Madam Chair, it's Andy Brick, real quick, I have to recuse myself from representing you in this matter. The new owner of the Well Now property is a client of our firms. So if you do need some legal advice, I can get you some alternative legal representation through the corp council's office.
Yeah, no, I think we'll be all right, well, we, I mean, it's just a sign. Right, I can't, I don't think that we'll need any...
If you do, just let me know.
Yeah, okay. Okay, is the applicant present?
I am, I'm Tom Wheeler with AJ Sign Company.
Okay, and what is it you want to do?
Basically, this is going to be a new Well Now urgent care. I'm sure you guys have seen these pop up around the capital region. Well Now is partnered with St. Peters Health Partners. St. Peters merged their urgent cares with Well Now. This is a location on Hurstick Street. It's going to be typical to the branding that you've seen in the other locations where they have the red awnings around the building and then they do signs on as many sides of the building that are visible to the streets just so that people when they're in distress or on the way to urgent care can find the location. It's clearly marked, they're all branded the same, so people are starting to recognize the Well Now brand as an urgent care and this is, we just want to keep the brand. The signs are, it's a dual-branded signs that has a Well Now and a St. Peters, which are both brands that people recognize, again, in the healthcare industry.
Okay, and just because we don't have quite what we should... Okay, and just because we don't have quite what we should have here, how much of a signage, it's kind of difficult to read, your thing didn't really print out real well, your application here. Can you tell me how much signage, uh, how much of a variance you need? How much signage you're going for?
We're asking for 378 square foot wall signs.
Right, 378 foot.
Yep, 78 square foot, yep.
Okay, so is that, the reach gonna be 78 square foot?
Yes.
All right, and, and James, what's the limit in that district?
So they're on, they're in the B4, uh, so, sorry, they're in the HCD zone-
Yeah, I have the staff report in front of me, that's why, I apologize.
That's okay. It follows the B4 signage standards, and they're not to exceed 100 square feet, based on those standards.
Okay, so what he wants is, uh-
So I have here 266.15 square feet, total area proposed. That's four signs. Tom, maybe you can speak to that sign D that was on there, so-
Sign D.
That's the one facing-
Oh, sign D is the monument sign?
I don't know, it's not, here, I'll, I'll share my screen.
There's just three sets of channel letters.
So can you all see this? The script, the overview that, the Well Now overview?
Yeah, I have that.
So, so Tom, I see, you know, all four awnings, and I see the, the first three signs, and I know there was some discussion about putting a monument sign here, but it's, it's a bit, it is a bit grainy to see, so I don't know if that says proposed freestanding sign, I'm assuming that's sign D?
Yeah, I believe that's already approved by you guys.
Okay, so maybe that's why it's been removed. Yeah, we did approve one sign because it was underneath that threshold of 100 square feet. So in talking to your office and the Building Department, we, we understood you guys were eager to get a, a sign up there, and we allowed one sign, as, you know, as long as it was under 100 square feet. So now that you're looking to exceed 100 square feet, you've obviously triggered the need for an area variance, and that's why you're in front of the board today. So it's really is, it really is the 378 square feet, the signs that are 78 square feet each, correct?
Okay, can I ask a question? Why do you need all this signage?
Uh, the biggest thing is just so people can identify the space where they're in need of help, you know, they cut their finger-
I'm sorry, is there somebody else, is there somebody else looking here or something? Okay, go ahead, Tom, I'm sorry.
It's really just to identify the space that people, when they're in need of help, they cut their finger, they have a heart attack, they can get there.
I understand that, I understand that. I mean, you know, people are sick, or obviously they're not looking at the place, but why do you, is this like traditional signage? Size signage?
Yep, this, if you look at all the other Well Nows in the area, they're all pretty much identical. The St. Peter's logo, we gotta get that in there, according to their corporate brand, so we put that in a box, so it's as small as it can be. And then the Well Now logo, the urgent care's a little small, so we try to get the Well Now big enough that the urgent care's visible. It's got a blue face and a red face, which doesn't throw light real well. So they're, they're not super bright, and it just, you know, they designed the buildings for these signs to fit into the facades, and, uh-
Right.
It's actually pretty, pretty common building, but it is identifiable, identifiable to people.
And this is the sign, and, and I, I think I, I just asked, this is the same signage that you have in all of your facilities?
It is, yep. Like Clifton Park, on the corner of Route 146 and Route 9, is a, a recent one. There's, they're really all over the, all over the place. There's one on West Math by City Albany.
All right. Is there anybody here to speak, speak in favor of this proposal?
Uh, I'd like to just mention that as part of the Planning Commission approval for this, this project, one of the stipulations was that there be no illumination on the, on the, the south side of the building, and it appears from this plan that, that they followed that, that requirement of the Planning Commission. They don't have any signage shown. Awning D is proposed to be non-illuminated. Is that correct, Tom?
Right, the awnings are just metal awnings, they're not illuminated at all.
So you already got the approval from the Planning Commission?
Uh, the project has approval.
I meant the signage, with the signage as it is.
The signage wasn't specifically approved or proposed, you know, it doesn't need review by the Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission did, did review the signage that is shown, uh, because that was the, the renderings that were provided, but the, the Planning Commission doesn't approve or disprove of signage. The only, the only stipulation they had was that there be no illumination on the residential side, the south side of the building, and from this proposal, it appears that they're, the, the applicant is-
Has gone along with that.
Is holding to that requirement, yes.
Okay. Is there anybody here to speak against this proposal? Do we have anybody from the zoning board who has a question? Well, then, if that's not the case, do we have a motion?
I will make a SECR.
Okay, you sound much better, Katie.
Yeah, I switched on my phone. Uh, Madam Chair, I move that in ZBA 2020-56, that the board finds this proposal to be a type 2 action with sufficient information available, pummeled to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Who's that?
John.
John, okay. Uh, okay, all in favor of the SECR?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Do we have a motion on the application?
Kathy, I just wanted to ask real quick, if, if there was a, you know, I, I know you have the illumination standards on here, Tom, but do you have any standard protocol? I mean, how, how late is this building open? When are you gonna have the lights on until, and when I say the lights, I mean, obviously, the, the lights illuminating the signs. I just wanna be considerate of the, the neighborhood, and I, I did put in the, the report, I mean, it, it does transition from Hoozick Street, obviously, it's heavily commercial, but once you go down Ninth and Tenth, it is almost entirely residential.
Typically, with the Well Nows, the intent is to leave the signs on when they're open. I believe they close at 11 o'clock right now, but I have seen the hours change as the need changes, but typically, if they're open, the signs are on, and then off from the floor.
Okay, I don't know if anybody from the board has, you know, shares any of those concerns, or, or wants to discuss any of those, those hours.
Is it possible, yeah, is it possible to just have the Hoozick Street sign illuminated until it closes, and maybe have the, the signs on the Ninth and Tenth side, um, you know, shut, shut off at an earlier time?
I'd, I'd be afraid that people would pull in and see that the sign on that side of the building's off, and not think they're open. I can tell you that these don't throw light very far, like the parking lot lights and the streetlights are much brighter than these signs, especially with the blue and the red faces, they really diffuse the light. So it's, it's, it's no less bright than anything else in the area.
Katie, Katie, I've noticed that, that sign on Ninth or Tenth, whatever it is, it faces, it faces Stewart's, which is lit up like crazy at night, so, uh-
Oh, that's true, so that's-
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't face residential. Hoozick and then that, and that face, face Stewart's does not face residential. The one that faces residential, they said it's not lit up.
The Ninth Street, right, okay.
Right. Is there any additional screening being proposed for, and, and I don't have the Planning Commission's approved site plan in front of me, but I don't know if there's additional screening proposed for, for the neighborhood, Tom, anything that would block? You know, I'm just, I'll share my screen really quick here, just to, just to explain what I'm talking about, but, you know, this is a Well Now site-
Like a tree line, or-
This is the Well Now site here, and you'll have the, the structure will be in this area, um, on the west side of the building, or on the west side of the, the frame here, and then this will be a parking lot, and you'll have your monument sign here that I'm sure will stay illuminated. This is what Gary's talking about, the, the Stewart's has been redeveloped. And, and so obviously, you have this community right here, with, you know, the folks, folks living right here. So I'm just looking out, you know, basically for these folks who are gonna be, you know, maybe sleeping here, winter time, uh, less, less vegetation in the way. So I just wanted to bring that up, and just see, again, if there's any, any concern about, uh, that light.
I can tell you that the signs are less bright than anything else, like the parking lot lights, or the lights in the building, or the streetlights, or cars going by. But I don't know, during the planning stages, if anything was done, I wasn't, I wasn't part of that. But the signs will not have an impact on most people.
Did you say you close at 11 o'clock, or am I making that up?
Um, I, I think they typically close at 11, but I have seen the hours change, so I don't, I don't wanna commit to the 11 o'clock.
And Stewart's is open until 12, or there, 11 or 12, I think Stewart's is open until-
Yeah, 11 or 12.
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody have anything, anything further they want to bring up? Or do we have a motion? Gary, wanna make a motion, since you were-
Sure. I don't have that number in front of me, but concerning ZB, I don't know the number.
56.
56-20?
Just 56, fine.
Okay. Uh, ZB 56, I, I recommend that we approve, because this will not create a hardship in the neighborhood, because it fits in with the other signage that's, the commercial signage that's in the area already.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, John, and on the motion, Katie McLaren?
Yes, yes.
John Normile?
I'll vote yes to approve.
Gary Pavlik?
I vote yes to approve.
And Kathy Conroy, I also vote yes. So you have your signage.
Thank you very much.
All right, good luck. Next case. Case number 57, the Hudson River Commons at 120 Hoozick Street, requests an area variance. The applicant seeks an area variance for exceeding the maximum allowable signage in the HCD zone. Is the applicant present?
Yep, it's me again, Tom with AJ Signs.
Hi, Tom.
Okay, move ahead, uh, move along then, we, we know each other well, so move ahead.
Basically, what we're looking to do here, there's a, a big multi-tenant monument sign in the Hudson River Plaza building near Sonic. We want to add two tenants to the bottom of the sign, so there's a space between the, the cultured stone wall and the bottom of the sign, we want to put two more tenants in there.
Okay, now my question to you is, before anybody else, according to the information we received, and it probably wasn't you, place has been there for forever, uh, this piece of property already has excessive signage that was never approved. Can you speak to that? There's too much signage there now, and they never got a variance for it.
Um, that is, I didn't make the sign, I can tell you that. I did the-
Right, no, I think it's probably way older than you, actually. It's been there for forever, the building, or the property. But my point is, it already contains, as it says, over 1,200 square feet of signage, which is too much to begin with. They never got a variance, so it's there. Um, I don't wanna say illegally, that's a strong word, but it's there without approval, so, um, I, I personally would have a problem adding to something that was already wrong.
I mean, I guess when all those tenants got signs, they weren't approved, is what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, yeah, I, I know I did the Planned Parenthood sign recently, I did, uh, another set of channel letters from somebody else in there, but we've always gotten permits for everything we've done, so I, going backwards, I can't really speak to that.
You're talking about doing, you're talking about signs that you put on that entrance? Or are you talking about signs that you changed down the building?
I've, I've done signs on the building, and I've always gotten permits for everything we've done.
For those, but as far as the, the, whatever you call the, the one in the front there?
Yeah, the monument.
The monument sign, yeah, that's, according to this information, that's, uh-
That sign was put up probably five, six years ago. I would imagine someone got a permit for it.
Um, well, it says that they didn't. Katie, did you have something, is something you want to say?
I just wondered why, instead of adding two more signs, couldn't those tenants go into the spots where the, um, the old tenants were? Like, I know Peebles used to be there, and I know Planned Parenthood is, is one of the, um, one of the new ones, but the Peebles sign could not come-
I guess, I guess the issue they're having, the realtors having trouble, there are some vacant spaces in there, it's having trouble renting them, because the people want to be assured that they'll have a spot on the monument sign. So in order to accommodate everybody that the plaza could hold, we need to add these two spots to the bottom of the monument sign.
But perhaps you could make the signs that were there, off the top of my head, I'm saying this, you could make the signs that are there smaller. I can understand what you're saying, they want to be able to put their signs out there, that's fair, but if the ones that are out there, some of them are rather large, aren't they?
Um, no, they're really all the same size, going all the way down the two sides, with the two big ones on top, and they all have lease obligations to stay like they are, so we can't shrink someone's existing sign. The next sign was built, they'll get promised what they have, and it's, it's typically in the lease.
So folks, I'm sharing my screen here, just to show the sign in question. What's being proposed is right underneath here. You can see, I mean, this, this is not a today's image, so these businesses may have changed, but you can see the breakdown. I think Kathy-
Can I ask this, before you go any further, James, can I just ask a question? Does this thing at the top, is that considered part of the signage, or no?
No.
Okay.
So Kathy, I think what you were referring to was, you know, that certain, certain buildings, or certain entities have more signage, like Big Lots in this instance-
Yeah, that's true, they got, yeah, 'cause they got a full, they got a full sign.
Right, and same thing with Peebles, they had a, they had a full sign here. So, and again, I, I mean, I don't have that approval or, in front of me, that they very well could have had approval when this was initially constructed. I don't know that. I mean, Kathy, you've been on the ZBA a lot longer than I've been around here, and I feel like you'd, you'd probably have a, a good idea if it came through to get approval.
I, I mean, but you're right, it's been here forever. I, I can't remember back that far. I remember putting a sign on Friendly's-
So just-
On the zoning board, but I don't remember putting a monument sign.
Whenever they go to swap out signage, they wouldn't need a, a variance unless they're increasing it, you know? They can swap these signs as much as they like, as long as it conforms with the standards, and, and they already have that sign constructed and, and approved by the Building Department. They can, they can swap out those signs, so it can say, you know, Planned Parenthood or Peebles, doesn't really matter i- in our, in our eyes, right? But what they're proposing is, is two new signs on the bottom, and, you know, I'm, I'm certain that if, if that was allowed, right, if we, if we would have allowed them to have more signage initially-
They can't see through this.
They would have been granted it, and, and now, you know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily be able to see through here, if you're going to make this right-hand turn, and there's somebody walking or, or another car. I mean, everyone's driven Hoozick Street here, everyone's experienced, uh, the mess of, of Hoozick Street, I think, uh, more obstructions and sightlines would be a concern from my standpoint in the city. And, and quite frankly, I mean, they're exceeding the maximum allowable signage by, by quite a lot. So it's not just this sign either that we use to, to add up the signage, it's every one of these signs on the buildings. And I mean, when we're talking about the intent of the zoning, the HCD signage standards that use the B4, sorry, the HCD, the HCD zone that uses the B4 signage standards is pretty clear in what it's, it's trying to achieve, and, and it's pretty clear that this is not what it's trying to achieve.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna ask the question of what you just had there, which was putting- was putting some signage on the west side of the driveway. I see you already had some there, didn't you, by Starbucks?
The Enterprise sign and the Sonic, yeah.
Right.
Yep, yep. There's more signs here. I mean, there's basically, wherever they could have put signs, there, there are already signs. There's a lot of signs up in here.
It's a big puzzle to that, James.
What was that, Kathy?
What's the solution to that?
I mean, is, honestly, I don't know what the solution is. It's not our job to find a solution for another business going in here that needs.
No, I don't mean that. I mean, no, I meant, what was the solution that perhaps the city could use to do something with all of the signage? You know what I mean? They've, they've overextended themselves on signage. And rather than just sit back and say, oh yeah, they overextend themselves on signage, next case. What, whose job is it to go up there and say, we gotta do something with this?
I think, I think Kathy, if, if what you're asking is, are they not compliant with the variances that they've received? I think that's a.
Well, I don't know that they receive variances. I don't.
Right, right, exactly, exactly. So if, if they are currently have more signage than they have approval for, that would be an issue for code enforcement.
Right.
If what you're asking is, okay, they're, they're allowed to have the signage they have, but we think it's too much moving forward, what can we do? Well, the planning commission could determine that there's too much signage on the site and perhaps have a condition of a future approval that might address that issue. So I think those are the two ways that you could potentially move forward. Either they're not allowed to currently have all that signage and, and code enforcement should enforce that, or they are allowed to do it. And then, you know, basically you have to wait until they're asking for permission for something else and make it a condition of that approval.
Well, I would personally.
I don't know if there's anything the ZBA can do this evening, except to review the application that they have from.
Right, thank you.
Right. But I would personally say, you can make a decision, I personally, for example, could make my decision based upon the fact that the code, code enforcement is going to go up there and, and make them comply with what they should comply with, rather than simply say, no, these two new businesses, I understand what Tom's saying, somebody going in there wants to have the same opportunity to double-size their building as Big Lots or anybody else who are on that big sign. And yet for us to say, okay, we'll stick them at the bottom, first of all, is adding to the signage that is wrong. And second of all, perhaps creating some sort of a safety hazard for people who are walking or driving by.
I mean, that's, that's so far back. When you pull forward in your car, you're ahead of the sign. It's not going to impair your vision coming out. There's also.
Okay. But I personally am more concerned with the fact that you have too much signage, not you, that there's too much signage on that property as compared to what they were either given or ignored.
Well, how do we know that? Can somebody pull all the sign permits for this property? Well, I mean, can, can the city pull and see if everybody got a sign permit? Because I, you know, I'm coming in this now. I didn't do all those signs.
Oh yeah, no, I know. We're not yelling at you, Tom.
No, I know, but.
No, and we're not, I mean, just to be clear, Kathy, and I think you posed the question. I mean, we're not considering all of that right now. We're here to consider.
No, we definitely aren't.
The two new signs that are proposed and, and what the zoning code says, which limits them to 100 square feet plus, I think it's 46 square feet per additional first floor business. And, and we know that they're already exceeding the maximum signage allowed.
All right, let me ask you this.
So, so I, I just want to keep us, you know, kind of on that track, just to make sure that we're only considering the two new additional signs being proposed on the monument sign that already exists. Or I don't know, is it a monument?
Does anybody, Gary?
I have a question. Yeah, I have a question. I want to know what created this problem with having no signage? Was it one of the larger stories got split in half? In which case, then the, one of the larger signs that belonged to that store could be split in half. I don't understand what created this issue.
That's what Katie said.
Yes, indeed. What created the issue? Was it one of the stories split? What, what is it?
I believe it was.
More up there?
I believe it was subdividing spaces into smaller spaces. And then now we don't have enough signage. But.
You do.
Enough, even if we subdivided what's on the sign, we don't have enough. You know, the Big Lots has a big panel, so we're, we're still short. And really, the only solution is to add this, this 24 square feet to the bottom of the sign. So it's super low impact. And that gives the tenants what they need, which, you know, economically speaking, builds the plaza. Now that's why they're having trouble renting space, because if, if the tenant can't have a sign out front, they won't rent. So it's going to eliminate vacancy. It helps the city in the end. It seems like the right thing to do to help the plaza.
I mean, I, I, I just don't see how it helps the city to allow these two additional signs on the bottom here. I mean, you can see on, on Google Maps, just going back, that sometime between 2011 and 2015, the monument sign was replaced. If there was, I mean, this is basically implying that there was no reason that they just left this gap open. And, and from this angle, you can clearly see that a pedestrian standing on the sidewalk would have no way of seeing if a car was coming at them. And the same thing vice versa. I mean, it, it's just, it's clear that there was a reason why there was no sign put there.
Because they didn't need it. There was no sign there because they had bigger tenants. They didn't need it. They didn't foresee some of these big tenants leaving and, and ending up subdividing spaces. When they built the sign, they built it for what they needed at the time.
Okay. And again, I just, I just want to reiterate that it's, it was already exceeding the code then. And, and now we're looking to extend that nonconformity. Again, I just.
James, or perhaps Andy, on that point, are they asking right now for a variance that brings this site into compliance? So have they, on their application, are they providing the total amount of signage the site currently has, along with the 24 square feet proposed and asking for a variance to bring the entire site into compliance? Or do they have to do that if they aren't?
Well, that, that's kind of like my point too. I mean, you know, you give them the thing, but if they're not going to be in compliance with how many square footage, why are we extending the non-compliance?
So I guess the city, the city would have to help me and pull up all these old sign permits and see what was permitted versus what's there.
No, I think you have to count the number of storefronts and calculate how much signage is allowed by our code and ask for a variance for how much is there plus what you're looking to add.
Aaron, I do have that. I do have their, their total, they did provide an inventory of their signs, as they've called it. So, so.
But is it part of the application?
It was provided, it was, yeah, it was provided as, as backup material to determine how much signage they had. You know, was it bundled into the application for these two specific signs? But it was, it's an inventory for this entire complex. They have 993 square feet of wall signs and 271.7 square feet for the existing monument sign. I don't believe that includes the sign out in front of Starbucks or Enterprise. So again, I mean, they're at.
1,204 square feet, give or take, right?
What was that, Kathy?
No, wait a minute. I'm sorry. 1,264.
Yeah, they're, they're at above 1,200 square feet of signage. And I, again, I just want to emphasize the intent of the zoning code.
And what is the, what is the.
In a zone that was, in, in an area that was rezoned more recently than any other zone in our entire city, clearly, I, I, I mean, I, I can't imagine this was the intent of, of the zone was to allow this type of sign and this, with this type of development. I mean, it just wasn't catered towards this.
So how many, how many square feet are allowed, James?
It's 100 square feet, up to 100 square feet. And then I believe they get 46 additional square feet per storefront.
Oh, that's a math issue.
It's still only 500 or 600 square feet total.
Right.
We're, we're at double that.
Right. So it's not, it's not even, yeah, there's no way this would bring it into compliance. It's not close to the allow, the max allowable signage. They're already over double what they would be allowed.
But I'm only asking for 24 square feet. If everything is up there, has gotten a permit, all we're looking at is the 24 square feet I'm asking for.
Right. But how many times have we heard that? I mean, every time this complex has come back for more and more signage, I mean, are we going to be here in another year or two years and somebody else is going to come back and say, I'm only asking for 24 more square feet? I mean, we, we know that we're at 1,200, over 1,200 square feet of signage in this complex, in, in an area that's being proposed where it could cause a potential traffic safety conflict.
Andy, is the, is Andy's support of proof on the applicant to show that they have the, they, they've received the area variances for where they're at to date? Or is that, is that responsibility on the city?
I, I think it would be on the applicant as part of the application process, as well as clarifying when they present the area variance test on that they are, you know, providing the most efficient means to obtain it. And so it's not a substantial variance request, as well as the fact that there are no feasible alternatives for them to pursue. So I'm a little bit surprised to hear that we don't even have a good handle on whether rest of the property is currently up to code and has all the proper permits. Because there is an argument that if you grant the variance for this 24 square feet, that is in effect legalizing everything that's there and, and giving a blessing to it, plus 24 additional square.
Exactly. That was my point. Is there, how about.
Because 24 isn't really substantial unless you look at the fact that it's already double past. So should we table it?
That's what I was going to suggest. Why don't we table it until we get a handle on exactly how many square footage, how much square footage is there in the whole property as compared, where variances, where variances given for that? And go from there. Because really, right now, Katie's right, 24 square feet is nothing. But it is compared to everything else. We're just perpetuating something that was done here wrong anyway.
So here's my problem with that. When we ask the city for help, they can't even tell me what's there. They.
Okay, all right. So perhaps then, all right, all right. So maybe we can have a variance or a variance, a motion to table this with the direction that by the next meeting or whenever you want to come back, we'll have the area variances in hand to, to show the total on the whole project, when they were granted and when they were removed or ignored, shall I say?
I started this in February.
And actually, all right, Tom, wait a second. Aaron?
Yeah, I just had a quick question for you, Kathy. If, if you don't mind, I don't want to distract you from the motion to table. But do you guys recall when the Sonic, because I think the Sonic would have been one of the last, the Sonic and then the, the Starbucks?
Starbucks.
The last businesses to go in. Do you guys ever recall seeing the variance for either of those in the signage?
I don't, I don't recall seeing it, which isn't to say it was there. John Normile is shaking his head. He's got to better remember than me. I. But on the other hand, I don't, I think that it should be something that we have on a piece of paper, you know, not just John Normile remembers and I forget. I, I really, I don't remember. But I think that we should, we need to get the, the handle on exactly what variances were already granted for this property. And we'll go, and we'll go from there. And that's.
I actually did the Sonic signs. That was, that's a separate parcel, I believe.
Okay. Well, anyway, the, all the others, I, I think we just have to get a handle on the whole piece of property. James, do you think that we can do that?
So here's my problem. I've been trying to do this.
All right, Tom, but I'm not, but Tom, I didn't ask you. I was asking James a question. I know you have a problem, but. Okay, you have to wait.
I will, I will look through our, our records and try to locate any variances that have been granted for this property. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'll work with the code enforcement tomorrow and see what we can come up with. Tom, I'm sure your office will be contacting us.
Yeah, we just need, we need better communication. Like I said, we've been trying since February and you guys told us you couldn't help us. We had to go out.
But you understand.
Get rid of all the signs. So I need you guys to work with us.
Okay. But you do understand when you're throwing out February, that February, March, April and May, we were in a pandemic and things weren't quite as they should have been. So it isn't like we had a lot of time. Okay, all right. Do we have a motion to table?
I'll make the motion to table.
Okay, John makes the motion, second by Katie. All in favor? Is that an all in favor? Or do we have to do it individually, James? James?
What's, you're asking if you, Andy, what do you want to happen here?
I want to know if the, if the tabling of the, the motion to table has to be done individually or as, can we do it as a group?
Because of Zoom, I would recommend that, that we do it individually, just so we have a record of it. Because people forget to unmute.
Motion to table, John?
I'm in favor of the motion.
Katie McLaren?
Also in favor.
Gary Pavlik?
Yes, to table.
And Kathy Conroy to table. Okay, so we'll table with the understanding that we'll get some definite information on the previous area variances. Next case, case number 58, 86 Seventh Avenue, an area variance. The applicant seeks an area variance for the expansion of a non-conforming use residential in an industrial zone. Is the applicant present?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And you want to introduce yourself, please, for the record and tell us what you want to do?
Hi, my name is Eddie Addison and I'm the owner of the property at 86 Seventh Avenue and the property next door, 97th Avenue. And in 2017, I moved the fence over onto 86 Seventh Avenue's property from, excuse me, the fence from 97th Avenue into 86 Seventh Avenue, so that I could give 97th Avenue more property because it was a single lot and 86 Seventh Avenue was a double lot. Both homes are single family. And I just wanted a little bit more space for the 97th Avenue house.
And you, you said you already did this?
Yes, ma'am. I, the fence has been there for, since 2017. So the 86 Seventh Avenue house has a chain link fence around the perimeter. The 97th Avenue has a white picket, polyethylene fence around the front. And then it is open in the back where I have a one-car entry in the back.
All right. So you've already done this and now you just want to get it approved? We're doing this like backwards?
Yes, ma'am. I, I actually, I am doing it backwards.
Yeah, no, that's okay. As long as I know what you, what you're, what you're doing. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Well, it's not, it's not the fence, just to be clear. It's, it's.
No, but what, right, by, by moving the fence, he moved the lot line. He needs to have the lot line adjusted and, but he already moved the fence.
Well, the fence, the fence is irrelevant. I mean, he's, he's moving the lot line and, and he's in an industrial zone. The reason why he's in front of us today is because by moving that lot line, he's making a residential property smaller in industrial zones. He's increasing the nonconformity of that parcel. It, it is a strange scenario in our zoning code. This block is a residential block. It appears it was zoned industrial in, I don't know if they were expecting the area just east of this to expand and take out all these houses or something. But it, it was zoned industrial. It's, it's a residential block. It's a residential property, both are residential properties. And he's simply moving the lot line.
Right. Okay. Do we have anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody to speak in opposition? Do we have any questions from the members of the board?
Nope.
Okay. Looks simple enough. Do we have a motion? Do we need a secret?
Yeah. Madam Chair, I'll move for ZBA 2020-58, that the board find this proposal to be a type two action with sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that the project is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
Do we have a second?
Second.
John Normile and on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, do we have a motion on the application?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Madam Chair, with respect to case number 58, the property 67th Ave. Madam Chair, with respect to case number 58, the property 67th Ave, I will move that we approve the variance for the reasons discussed previously during this meeting. The, the benefit really can't be achieved by any other means that's feasible because we're, we're curing something, right? An undesirable change in the neighborhood or in neighborhood character will not take place. The request is not substantial and it will not have an adverse physical or an, an adverse environmental effect.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Gary Pavlik and on the motion, Gary Pavlik?
I vote yes to approve.
Katie McLaren?
Yes, to approve.
John Normile?
I vote yes to approve.
And Kathy Conroy, I vote yes to approve. So you don't have to take your fence down and start over.
I really appreciate that.
Okay.
Everybody, thanks for your time.
The next case, number 59, 3725th Street and 2 Northern Drive, area variances. The applicant seeks an area, area variances, excuse me, for lot, same thing, lot line adjustment and addition in a B3 zone. The applicant present?
Elizabeth Rodriguez here, the architect of Prepared Site Plan and Seth Pettit, representing the owner.
Okay, so Liz, are you going to speak first or...?
I just wanted to introduce Seth, uh, one of the owners of the Old Bailey Customs Catering. And she's going to explain to you why they would like these variants, why they need them.
Okay, Steph?
Can you hear me?
Yep, I can.
Hi. So, uh, in an effort to survive this pandemic, uh, we've tried to diversify some of our products and we were lucky enough to partner with Cookie Therapy. They were a online and YouTube-inspired, not YouTube, Instagram-inspired business that went gangbusters selling cookies and we were able to bring about 20 of our workers back to work back in May, making these cookies. Uh, now that catering has opened up a bit and we are, believe me, we're about 95% down, but we have found the need to expand and get the walk-ins out of the interior of the building and then kind of segregate between baking and the cooking because they kind of don't co-mingle very well. You have like roasts and smoke from meats and then you've got, you know, these big stuffed chocolate chip cookies. So our hope was to gain about 500 feet in the kitchen, 500 square feet, by taking our walk-in cooler and freezer and moving them out to the east on a piece of property that my husband and I are under contract to purchase from Bill Chow's family. And so we, I, maybe Elizabeth, you're better to describe what we're trying to do?
Yes, sir. Uh, so in order to do this, uh, well, first of all, I guess the big problem is that these lots just don't conform to the district, the shopping center commercial. The district is designed for...
I'm sorry, I don't...
Yeah, could you speak up a little bit?
Oh, sure.
Very hard to hear you.
Okay, let me just make sure my microphone is turned up. How's that now?
I don't know. You have to keep going more than that.
Okay, how's that?
We'll see. Keep going.
That sounds better.
Better? Okay, um, so the, the, I guess the root of the problem is that this lot, the lot that where their business is located in the B3 highway commercial, uh, doesn't conform to the lot sizes expected for that area, like what you might see in the shopping plaza across the way. So they can't really conform with the requirements of the zone just because they're starting out with a very undersized parcel. And so the goal is to, they're, purchase the property next door, split off a slice of that property and add it to the commercial property and build an enclosure for their walk-in coolers. They would leave a 10-foot step back from the property line to the coolers and they have an interest in improving the property, the residential property they're, they're purchasing. Seth was telling me how, um, the carriage house is a sweet building that they'd like to maintain and she'd like to make the property, uh, you know, better for the tenants there by enclosing it with some fencing. So like I said, the, the, the changes are minor in the grand scheme of things. The lots don't fit the expected, you know, what, I guess, the vision for the zone when the, when the ordinance was developed. Uh, and so it seems like a minor change in the grand scheme of things.
Now, I understand that, um, obviously I don't understand, I know, that you have to go to the planning board for this also, right?
Yeah, I believe.
Yeah, and there's a question, uh, I believe, James, as to whether or not the planning board may come up with a different way for you to develop this piece of property, which would make the area variances that you are requesting from us, uh, not the area variances in the end that you would really need.
Just to rephrase that, Kathy, sorry. It's not that they would develop it a different way. It's that just to make sure that the site would work properly, I mean, Aaron?
Well, okay, well, right.
Jump in, based on your experience, often, often projects of this scale, when you're adding an addition, you're working with parking, different types of traffic flow concerns, they often shift in, in a foot on one side or a foot on the other side. And what I'm trying to avoid is the ZBA granting or denying variances based on this proposal if the applicant is going to come back in a month or two months or three months with a, a proposal that might be slightly different but would still require a whole new set of variances to be applied here.
I think I said that, James.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I mean, if I can, if I can jump in, um, James, do you mind sharing that, that plan again? I can just, um, there are a couple of things I, I noticed sort of along that line of, uh...
Go ahead, Aaron.
Um, the, what I noticed there is, um, I, I originally thought that the carriage house or garage in the rear was going to be raised. If, if, if that is going to remain, you know, we'd want to make sure that, um, you know, I don't know if the intent is to maintain vehicular access back to that, that area, but we would want to make sure that, you know, it looks like maybe the access was currently off of Sixth Avenue, off to the right-hand side of the pavement there, uh, where it says Dirt Drive. You know, obviously now that that becomes part of the, the larger parcel, that access is no longer going to be maintained unless easement's granted. But I will say that, you know, aside from the, the planning aspects of the, of the proposal, that I completely agree with the characterization that both of these lots are non-standard. You know, a, as they exist today, they, they, they are nowhere near meeting the minimum lot sizes or setbacks or anything like that. You know, the, the zone that they, they find themselves in was really thrust upon them back in 1988 when, when the last rezoning was done. Um, and so, you know, I, I, I think that the, the applicant is, is attempting to make the best use of the property that, that, that they've been given. So I, you know, I, it might be a good idea to, to see if the planning board has any, any further comments on that and perhaps leave the planning commission with a recommendation, or if the board this evening feels, um, comfortable enough with the proposal and would like to, um, to, to act. You know, certainly that's within your purview.
So I, I just heard a comment about parking and we purchased the property just south of here and we have 40, 47 spaces. Um, because like you said, it's such a tight spot. You can see there are spaces along the south side of the building that are generally used for customer pickup, but the entire parking lot on this crushed gravel is ours and is, and we have an additional lot.
So you're, um, I didn't notice that either. Uh, so, so you're showing parking in the right-of-way and dumpsters located in the right-of-way. Perhaps, perhaps those are issues that we can discuss at the, at the planning commission. I, I, I don't know if they, um, I don't know that that should be considered at, at, at this, at this stage. It's really about the, the physical size of these lots and, um, and the fact that, you know, currently the buildings don't meet the setbacks. In fact, they're, they're not asking for anything other than the modification, several of the setbacks that currently exist on the site.
So, rather than...
Oh, can I ask Steph to just talk about the saving of the barn? Would the barn be used in conjunction with the business, do you think, or with the residence?
Well, the, the business, because if you see, there's just, uh, to the left of the barn is a walk-in that is eliminated. We're able to incorporate that into this additional structure area we're talking about, which frees our access to the barn from that direction. So then you wouldn't really have to worry about thus coming through the residential portion off of Sixth to access the, see right there? That will be gone.
Is that a residence today?
Part, the, um...
No.
Which, the two family here that we're purchasing?
The barn here that you're talking about?
Oh, no, it's, it's, it, it's, I think it's got some junk in it. It's not a residence, no.
So that's going to be converted to a residence?
No, 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 no. It'd be used, it would just have the roof fixed, uh, the doors fixed, probably put an actual garage door.
The whole structure would be addressed.
Yeah, we'd address the entire structure. We think it has some historic significance. It's, actually, I'd say the word, it's precious. But if it's, if it proves to be stable, of course, we would use it.
Okay, and this existing residence on the left here is what you're talking about, two family?
That's what we are purchasing and we are going to, um, it's cur, it's currently leased to people who've paid on time during this whole COVID experience. So our intention is to maintain their residence for them, just make some improvements to the units while they're there and then afford them a grass area where you see the gravel here. We would, uh, make it private between the walk-in walls and their, um, residence with, with a fence, so they had a nice area for the kids to play in, on the side yard.
Okay, uh, do we have any questions for the applicant and the members of the board?
Not a question from me so much as just, I mean, it sounds really nice, but when you look at, you know, and again, I, I recognize that it's a very oddly shaped lot and certainly was never provided for in the zone, um, you know, in the ordinance, but that variances are pretty substantial. So I guess for me, I would be more comfortable with it going to site plan review first before we, um, look at granting variances.
As would I, because as we said earlier, we liable to be granting variances that are not the ones in the end that they're going to need.
Right, right.
So we would be better off since there is a strong possibility, or I can say strong, but a possibility that the planning board will say, "Well, you should do this here," which isn't to say we're not all in favor of the proposal. It's just that we might have to grant other variances and then you're wasting more time.
And money.
And, um, and Steph, what were you saying?
Well, just the application fee. It'd be a separate application.
The application fee, okay, but, um, you know, I don't know. Why would you want to take the time to grant something, to discuss something tonight? That might just not be what you're going to need. Are you going to the planning board, is it next week or whenever they meet?
Elizabeth could speak to that.
Elizabeth?
Yes, we should be on that agenda. James, we on that agenda? It's for next week. It got moved.
It's next week?
Yep.
And then come back to us in November?
Yep.
Gary or John, do you have anything you want to add or ask or question or anything?
No, it makes sense.
I, I don't, I don't believe this is on the agenda for planning for this meeting. It, no, it should be on in the, for November's meeting though. Yeah, I don't, I don't believe this is, uh, the, the meeting, uh, planning meeting was supposed to be, uh, this Thursday. It was, it was moved until the 29th, but I don't believe this is on that, that agenda. However, it will be on, uh, the, the regular November, uh, agenda, November 19th.
And when is that, November 19th?
Yes, yes, that's after your next meeting. Um, so...
After our next meeting?
I believe so.
So we'd have to see if it'd be December.
Yeah, so, so I mean, uh, I, I do think that the planning commission could, could review this project. We could certainly do some, uh, review, uh, amongst the city staff as well to, to, to help the applicant, um, uh, get a good presentation at the first planning, uh, planning commission meeting and, uh, potentially walk away from that meeting with a recommendation to the ZBA. Uh, I do have another question for Andy, uh, and that would be in terms of seeker. You know, if the ZBA wanted to declare lead agency, um, for the purposes of seeker review, is that something they could do this evening for the unlisted action? And then the planning commission would, would, it would make conditional approval, approval conditioned upon the ZBA granting the variances and provide a recommendation? And then it would come back to the ZBA for, for final approval? Is that...
I, I, I would, I, I would think it would make more sense to have the planning board be lead agency only because the variance requests may change. So if they declare lead agency this evening, it would be based upon the variances before them, which may change. I, I think having the planning board be lead agency is more functional and it's not going to slow anything down.
Okay, then, so, that being the case, do we have a motion? We're not doing the secret, right? James, we're not doing the secret?
No, no, we're not. I mean, I, I'm not deciding that for you, but that's what we just said, was it would make more sense to have the planning commission be the lead agency. The ZBA wouldn't do the secret or, or vote to approve or deny it.
So...
Right, so what, go ahead, Katie.
Can we, if we table, is there, does that put a timeline on the applicant?
No.
Because it can't be November? It has, it would have to be December?
No, they can come back when they're ready.
Okay, alright.
Okay, should we have a motion?
So I'll make a motion that we, um, for case, um, number 59, that we table until after the site plan review.
Do we have a second? John Normile seconds on the motion. Gary Pavlik?
I vote yes to table.
John Normile?
I vote yes to table.
Katie McLaren?
Yes, to table.
And Kathy Conroy, I vote yes to table. Okay, so we'll see you back here soon.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Next case, number 60, 770 Pauling Avenue, a special use permit. The applicant seeks a special use permit to convert the first floor of an existing structure into a residential, residential, in a B1 zone. Is the applicant present?
Uh, yes. My name is Tony DeDamo of Capital Architecture.
You're who? What's your name?
Uh, Tony DeDamo of Capital Architecture.
Okay, you want to tell us what you want to do?
Yes, uh, first, we had got into the existing building to do a survey of the structure. It was in a, it was a bar at one time and the ceilings were just, just over seven feet tall. So they're very low. It's a second floor. Uh, after re, uh, working with the client, because they were trying to make six units out of this, it wasn't, it wasn't really feasible. The second floor was low, the windows didn't work and the structure and the first floor would have been too low to be legal for code. So we went back and we decided to, uh, start correcting the framing just so it didn't fall down because it actually was failing. And we got a permit for that, so we've been working on the outside walls just to shore up the structure and the roof. What we'd like to do is basically create, uh, three, uh, two-bedroom residential units or apartments. It would be approximately 800 square feet each.
Okay, and why do you feel that this won't, um, that this will be okay in this neighborhood?
Just to be clear, Kathy.
Well, hang on a second, Tony.
Yeah, so they're just here for the special use permit. So this is a permitted use in the B1, um, but they're on the first floor in the B1, so they need a special use permit. So it isn't allowed to use. It's in front of the board today to hear any concerns the board might have, address anything that you might want to stipulate, um, but it isn't allowed to use by right.
Okay, well, I personally think that it's a good idea if there's residential homes on both... Okay, well, I personally think that it's a good idea if there's residential homes on both sides. I don't have any reason why you shouldn't be able to do this.
Yeah, there, there are residential on both sides. There's tacos across diagonally, but yeah.
Right. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody, any, are you here to speak in favor, the telephone person here? No?
That's Tony. That's, that's the architect.
Oh, that's Tony. Oh, I'm looking at Joe Johnson over here. I'm all confused. Okay.
I believe Joe is the applicant.
Joe's the applicant. Tony's the one who's doing the talking without his name. Got it. Okay. Now, so we have nobody here to speak in opposition either then, since there's no one else here. So, members of the board, do we have any questions for the applicant? No?
Not for me. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yes. No reason why we have to carry on further than we do.
Madam Chair, do you mind if I ask a question?
Oh, okay, if you must, James. Go ahead.
Is there anything being done to the structure that would prevent it from being turned back into a commercial structure in the future?
Uh, no, we're, I mean, right now, we're actually splitting it. It was, it was built into almost thirds. So we're keeping the failing beams that were in there. They were basically like steel railroad ties. We're taking that out and building actual walls, but you could always header those off and make openings between it to make commercial spaces or turn it into three commercial spaces in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so do we have a secret?
Yes, Madam Chair, for ZBA 2020, case 60, I asked the board to find this proposal to be a type two action with sufficient information available upon which to make a determination that it is not expected to cause significant environmental impact.
And do we have a second on the secret?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried? Do we have a motion on the application?
No move, that we accept this variance, number 60, in that it will not create any differences in the neighborhood since the neighborhood is already consisting of residential areas. Therefore, it won't create any difficulties or hardships in the neighborhood.
Okay, do we have a second?
No second.
Okay, on the motion, John Normile?
I'll vote yes to approve.
Gary Pavlik?
I vote yes to approve.
Katie McLaren?
Yes, to approve.
And Kathy Conroy, I vote yes to approve. All right, so go ahead. Good luck.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, do you have any other business? Other than a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a move.
Okay, we all motioned that.
I'll second it.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
See you next month. Let's all hit leave.
Thanks.
No offense, James.